the Rochester City School District's premier news program. Each week we bring you vital news about Rochester schools, important dates for parents, as well as special features that bring you into real Rochester classrooms. This week Students First is pleased to present the Rochester Board of Education's Observance of Women's History Month. The board and community met at Rochester's Franklin Educational Campus as these prominent women in our schools received awards for excellence in education and citizenship. Here's a look.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Campos. I'm one of the new commissioners for the Rochester Board of Education and thank you all for attending this special celebration to honor, it is always so wonderful to honor the strength of women because especially here in Rochester, that's what we're about. There's such a strong history in the founding of women's rights and we have come such a long way and we need to continue to celebrate the success that these young women have had. So please help me first, give them a round of applause. And to start us off, to sing the National Anthem, please welcome up Gary Ann Lewin, who's a senior at the Bioscience and Health Careers Campus here at Franklin. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free? And the home of the brave? Thank you. I don't know about you, but I just got chills. American Idol will be calling you, Gary Ann. Please help me welcome up our new superintendent, Mr. Jean-Claude Bizard.
Good afternoon, it's not even here, good afternoon. Before I say greetings, let me tell you a little bit about a woman in history that I've looked up to since I was a high school junior when I took my first real Regents' Chemistry class. As many of you know, I have a degree in chemistry, in chemistry and physics. It's been my passion for a very long time and as I fly, I'm also a commercial pilot, as I fly physics always comes close to me as you know, looking at vectors, you're looking at thrust, you look at friction, you look at lift, Bernoulli's Principle. For those who have never seen this, let me show you a little trick about flying. You guys know how airplanes fly? No? Why they have to run down the runway before they actually take off? Watch this, I'm gonna blow above the paper, not below the paper, but above the paper. It lifts, right? Lift versus thrust, what makes airplanes fly. One of my heroes is a woman by the name of Mary Curie, if you know who she is. Mary Curie was the first well-known woman scientist in the modern world, the mother of modern physics, a pioneer in research and radioactivity. She's the first person to coin the word radioactivity. First woman awarded a PhD in Research Science in Europe, first woman professor at the Sorbonne in France. She discovered and isolated two elements, polonium and radium, and established the nature of radiation and beta rays. She's the first woman to win a Nobel Prize and the first person to win two Nobel Prizes in two different disciplines, one in chemistry, one in physics. And if you don't know, her husband was killed actually by a horse drawn carriage in France. She raised two kids by herself. She was refused entrance into the French Academy of the Sciences because she was a woman. Yet she went on to become a chair of the biggest universities in France. So again, when you look at someone like that who has resilience, who continues to push despite everything that comes at her, you begin to understand why she's important to me as a person. And as a father of a soon-to-be seven-year-old girl, I tell you, I'm always very proud to know that girls always outperform boys in all, by the way, the content areas that we have in New York State. If you look at math, you look at science, if you look at the Regents examinations, girls do better than boys. In our district, girls have a higher graduating rate than boys. So someone told me, girls are smarter, that's why this happens all of the time. I'd be, I guess, be more proud to say that as a people, we've done a little more work in trying to push our girls to do better. Not to say we shouldn't push our boys, but as a father of a girl, I'm very happy this is what is happening. So I welcome you tonight as we celebrate, not Black History Month, but Women's History Month, and celebrate your daughters, your sisters, your mothers, and your wives. Thank you.
I think the superintendent said one key word that I think best defines women, and that is resilience. That is what we hold true as a characteristic for us in our being and I think that's what truly makes us special and that's something that should be celebrated. Please help me welcome up Ms. Jackie Morgan from the Rochester Board of Education.
I'm just going to give you a brief bio of Susan B. Anthony and as we all know, Susan B. Anthony lived here in Rochester and actually has a house on Madison Street that we can still go and tour to see how she lived here. So just to be brief, I'm gonna just do this quickly. Susan B. Anthony was born February 15th, 1820, in Adams, Massachusetts. She was brought up in a Quaker family with long activist traditions. Early in her life, she developed a sense of justice and moral zeal. After teaching for 15 years, she became active in temperance. Because she was a woman, she was not allowed to speak at temperance rallies. This experience and her acquaintance with Elizabeth Katie Stanton led her to join the Women's Rights Movement in 1852. Soon after, she dedicated her life to women's suffrage. Ignoring opposition and abuse, Anthony traveled, lectured, and canvassed across the nation for the vote. She also campaigned for the abolition of slavery, women's rights to own property and earnings, and women's labor organizations. In 1900, Anthony persuaded the University of Rochester to admit women. Go Susan. Anthony, who never married, was aggressive and compassionate by nature. She had a keen mind and a great ability to inspire. She remained active until her death on March 13th, 1906. Thank you.
And Commissioner Powell will be coming up to introduce a few of our school representatives.
Thank you so much and I apologize, my apologies for being a little bit late. If we could start right at the top with Barbara Neary, School Counselor for Charlotte High School. And Barbara's going to introduce her student.
I'm from Charlotte High School. I have the privilege of having a relationship with Senior Rosetta Washington for the first time in our building. She's had the relationships with other counselors prior to me. I knew of her for a few years, but I am just so proud to be associated with Rosetta, who is one of the most hardworking, determined, resilient, energetic young women I have ever known at this level or at the college level. So I am very proud to have this award go to you, Rosetta. Rosetta will be attending University of New Haven next fall studying juvenile justice. Thank you.
Thank you very much and I am also the student representative of the Rochester City School District. So on behalf of the board, I'm gonna say a word to the young ladies also, since we're all getting awards today. Obviously, it's hard work, I'm getting an award myself. I know we all be stressing at times and stuff like this is what pays off. So I do it for the awards and I do it for the achievements in the future. So I hope y'all do it for the same reasons and congratulations to you all.
And if Sandra Martinez, School Counselor for East High School, could come forward.
I have the pleasure to introduce you tonight to Lakeisha Clark. This year I became Lakeisha Clark's counselor. She is one of our poster child in one of our advertisements that we do for recruitment. Lakeisha's a senior, she's number two, number 32, class ranking of 276. She has participated in sports, she's been involved in other activities in school, and it's an honor to be her counselor and to have a wonderful relationship. Lakeisha, please come up.
Am I reading that? No.
I'm here to support you.
Thank you, I really appreciate this award. I get to put this on my wall. Thank you.
I'd like to just say a few words to these young ladies. You are tomorrow's future and you, we are looking up to you to make a difference in this community and wherever you go. We are looking up to you to be that anchor to say, change has to take place. Remember, there is a big election coming up and there's a woman running and I'm not talking about politics, but just think that one day you could be in those shoes. Thank you.
Ms. Cankum, Assistant Principal for Jefferson.
I'm here to present the award to Ms. Gwen Shaw. I became acquainted with Gwen in eighth grade when she was moved into the high school component of Jefferson as an accelerated student. And so as you know, as an accelerated student, it's an achievement in itself to meet that rigor in terms of academics. But when I met Gwen, I was just, her sense of maturity struck me. To be so young and to be amongst a bunch of high school students and have to be able to be responsible and dependable, Gwen rose to that challenge and has never disappointed any of us. Since coming to Jefferson, Gwen has demonstrated commitment to her education. She has always been on the honor roll. She has been a part of all academic and behavior incentives. She is a black scholar. She participates in the Wegmans Work Scholarship Program. She works at Wegmans, I mean, I could go on and on. She was a varsity cheerleader, played softball, and she is currently in the Stars Program and will participate in the Debutante Ball next week. Gwen is intelligent, responsible, beautiful, dependable. She's ranked number nine out of 130 students and will receive an Advanced Regents Diploma in June. So it is with great pleasure and honor that I present Gwen with her award.
I just wanna say thank you to everybody that supported me.
I'm gonna call out three, the three people that'll be presenting to the audience. First, we have Linda Mortis from Marshall. We have Elizabeth Foran, who's a teacher at Monroe. And also Ms. Lisa Kazdin, who's a school counselor. And Maria Mendicino, who's an intervention specialist at the School of the Arts. Please welcome them up. And while they're making their way, just so that everyone knows what the plaque says, it says, "The Susan B. Anthony Leadership Award Presented to and the Award Winner," and it says, "Rochester Board of Education, March 27th, 2008." And it has their picture on it, so it's a beautiful award.
Good evening. I'm from Marshall High School. It's my pleasure to announce our recipient. Her name is Ms. Tiara Blue. Tiara has an unweighted GPA of 3.37. She is ranked third in the graduating class. She will receive an Advanced Regents Diploma this June. In addition to the Susan B. Anthony Award, she's an Urban League Black Scholar, recipient of the Baushen Lomem Honorary Science Award, and the University of Rochester Corporate Award for Outstanding Achievement in Science. Her co-curricular activities include the Marshall Prism Club, Student Government Officer where she serves as the Vice President of her class. She's been involved in sports, including cheerleading and volleyball. She's a Hillside Work Scholarship Connection participant, Liberty Partnership Program, and she works part-time for the Zeller Corporation and tries to volunteer her time whenever she can. She's applied to NYU, where she hopes to attend, and majored in pre-med. Her career goal is to be a pediatrician. The person she most admires is her grandmother, Ms. Christine Cannon. "Her character and citizenship are above reproach. She is one of the finest young women I've had the pleasure to work with," says her guidance counselor, Ms. Barbara Postel. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like you to meet Ms. Tiara Blue.
I just wanted to say thank you for everyone supporting me, especially my family. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Liz Fran from Monroe. I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Vanessa Sampson this evening. Vanessa is one of our most outstanding students at Monroe. She's fourth in her class, always been one of, very, very strong academically, but more than that, she's also a leader. She's the managing editor of our student newspaper currently, our new student newspaper, and these kids spend hours and hours and hours a week working on this. In fact, she's getting a break this evening from production. We'll be at school till about 10 o'clock tonight producing our April issue. In addition to that, she's very involved in the deaf community. She does a lot of outreach, she volunteers with her church, educating for American Sign Language, religious education with the deaf community. She's just an outstanding young woman and I'm very proud to present her with this award.
I wanted to say thank you. The letter was a complete surprise, I didn't even know anything about the award, so it's really an honor and thanks so much.
I'm Maria Mendicino and I'm the Intervention Specialist at School of the Arts and this is Lisa Kazdin, Alyssa's counselor. When I first met Alyssa in ninth grade, she was red flagged, which meant she was in trouble. And at that time, I'm not even sure Alyssa, if your grade point average was a 1.0, but she came into my office probably with bruised knuckles from punching the wall and really began to talk over the years about what was going on in her life and began to see herself as someone of great, great value. And in fact, last year, she won one of the Young Citizen of the Year Awards. So I brought something today, being School of the Arts, to symbolize when I met Alyssa, then and now. This was Alyssa in ninth grade and this is Alyssa now. So, Alyssa, come on up.
I'm just gonna echo Ms. Mendicino's sentiments, you have grown into such a lovely young woman. And as testimony to that, look at all of the SOTA faculty and staff, including an administrator and family that are all here because of, we are so incredibly proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, in preparation of this speech, I have given a lot of thought about how I got to be here today. It's pretty amazing when I look back to my ninth grade year. Changes began starting with Ms. Mendicino knocking some sense into my head. I began to realize that I had a lot of influential adults at school that showed me that they cared enough and that I could turn to them when I needed someone to talk to. Some are here today. Mrs. Cahill, Ms. Dewey, Ms. Kazdin, Ms. Nguti, and of course, Ms. Mendicino, and not forgetting Mrs. Credo. Right around the middle of ninth grade year, I became involved with a program at St. Joseph's Villa. This gave me many opportunities to learn about myself, giving me my first experiences and helping other people. There are, of course, many friends and family that have given me the right instruction in life that has helped me get to where I am today. I can't thank them enough. Some of the people include my mom, Gina, Grandma, Sarah, Nurse Mary, Juan, Darlene, Chiron, Shannon, and Keith. As I think about myself back then, I can see how having so many people care about me helped me make the choices that have changed my life. I have volunteered at many places such as Camp Good Days and Special Times, AIDS Rochester, and Catholic Charities, to name a few. I know I get back as much or more than I give. My plan after high school is to go on to college for pediatric or oncology nursing. I want to do this because I want to help make a difference in people's lives, just as others have done in mine. Thank you.
And now Commissioner Williams will come up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alan Williams and I am the other new commissioner on the board. And I have the distinct honor and pleasure of introducing Ms. Sandra Jordan, who is the principal of Dr. Freddie Thomas High School. Barbara Hassler, principal at Wilson Commencement. Jamie Salatino at School Without Walls. And Katie Scher, the school counselor at the Young Mothers Program.
Vicky and I tonight have the pleasure of introducing Christina Valentine. When this award first came out, hands down, school staff just said one name. There was no other choice in our building. It was Christina Valentine. And when you see her award tonight, if you get a chance, she would not let me use this beautiful senior photo she had taken. It was gorgeous. She wanted me to use the photo when she went to work at Habitat for Humanity, wearing her hard hat and pushing a wheelbarrow. And that tells you who Christina is. And I know Christina's home mom is here, but for the past four years, she's also had a school mom, and that's Vicky. So, Vicky?
I've known Christina for four years now. She's stepped into leadership roles at school. She's a senior class leadership team. She is our representative of the Student Leadership Congress. She has, is the president of our National Honor Society, Dr. Freddie Thomas. And the Freddie Thomas family is so incredibly proud of Christina. I know that her family is proud. She's a member of the Hillside Work Connection, she's a member of the Liberty Partnership Program. She takes every opportunity to step into leadership roles and community service. One of the community services I think she's the most proud of right now is, she's a big sister to two young girls at School 22. She's providing a role model for those coming after her, just like Susan B. Anthony. Come on up, Christina.
My mouth is kinda dry, but it feels amazing to receive this award. I know that Susan B. Anthony was such a leader for women and I would just like to thank a lot of people who've really helped me to get to where I am today. Ms. DiMatteo, Ms. Jordan, my mom, who I love so much, my stepfather, my brother, Chabi, Ms. Lewis, Ms. Laseth. I just wanna thank you guys so much because I don't think you guys understand how much you mean, thank you.
I'm Barb Hassler, principal at Wilson Commencement, and I have the pleasure of introducing to you Benevolence Watkins. Benevolence, come up here while I talk about you. I met with Benevolence just to make sure I would capture all the nice things that I wanted to say about her. And as we talked, these are the things that we both recognized as her positive leadership qualities. She has a strong commitment to personal excellence and to community service. Benevolence has routinely a 3.5 to a 4.0 GPA on any of her marking period report cards and these are all in courses of high rigor, with honors being the least rigorous, and up to AP courses that she's involved in. She also is highly involved in extracurricular activities. She is one of our Wilson Pearls, which is a member of our step team. She runs track, she's on the prom committee, she was the homecoming queen, and she also participates in our student forums. Then she has a part-time job at Hurlbert Nursing Home. She volunteers to do clerical work in one of our school offices. She is an active member of her church and volunteers by teaching Sunday School. So you can see that Benevolence is really quite a young lady. When I asked her, well, I knew about her future intentions, excuse me, she wishes to be a pediatrician and she has applied to several schools and we're anxiously waiting to hear. But I also said to her, what are your goals? And she said, "Well, I wanna be a pediatrician, I'd love to be a part-time model." She says, "But what I would really like to be is a good role model for my son." And I think, Benevolence, you've already accomplished that. Congratulations, honey.
Thank you. I would like to thank my mom, first and foremost, for being there for me after having the baby in ninth, 10th grade, and everybody else who supported me. I would like to thank those who nominated me for this award because I had no clue about it at all. And I just wanna say thank you.
It's my pleasure tonight to present this award to School Without Walls Senior Joanna Groob. Joanna is a student who embraces learning in all settings. She has selected avenues of learning to expand and She has selected avenues of learning to expand and elevate herself. Joanna has done four years of community service through Rappa, WXXI, ABC, and the Community Darkroom. Joanna has taken AP classes both her junior and senior year, including AP, Art History, and English Literature, as well as a college course, Social Psychology and Individual Differences, offered through the University of Rochester. Additionally, Joanna has earned full credit for four years as a student at School Without Walls. She is interested in the arts, a ferocious reader, and exceptional writer, a talented illustrator in pen and pencil, and she has expanded her interest in the arts through photography, which is the main focus of her nine-month-long senior project at School Without Walls. Joanna will be holding a photographic exhibition of her work at Lumiere's Second Floor Gallery. And finally, Joanna has been an integral participant in the School Without Walls Peace Group, helping to initiate and organize protests against the war in Iraq, and she has had a longstanding interest in learning about and exploring other cultures. She has gone so far as to secure a scholarship through the Rotary International Exchange Program and will spend next year in Finland before attending college in Fall, where she will pursue photojournalism. Congratulations, Joanna.
I guess I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who's had faith in me all these years.
My name is Katie Shire, and I am the school counselor at the Young Mothers and Interim Health Academy. And I'm here to present this award to Rayvon Brown, who I love, such a good student. When I was listening to a lot of the presenters earlier talk about women and resiliency, one of the things that comes to mind with Rayvon is overcoming obstacles. Rayvon is a senior at the Young Mothers Program, recently had a child. She works at Wegmans after school. She pulls straight A's. She's a high honor roll student, and she's rare. She's rare. One of my only seniors that I don't have to push. She has wonderful follow-through. She's extremely dependent, very hardworking. I talked to some of her classmates, and some of the things that they said was that they wanna follow in her footsteps. They look up to her as a leader. What's most evident about Rayvon's leadership ability is that she doesn't take it for granted. She knows that she is a leader to others. She's very confident. And she makes sure to always make a good impression on those who look up to her. She gives her best effort, 100% all of the time. Rayvon is more than ready to begin college. She's attending MCC this fall, and she shows it in the way that she takes pride in her work. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Rayvon Brown.
I'd like to say thank you, and couldn't have done it without my teachers and my family and my divorced son, who's almost six weeks. I'm gonna cry. And I would just like to say congratulations to all you ladies. You did a good job being high school pretending.
And I'd also like to introduce Matthew Lanier, who is the principal, and Wendy Robinson, a school counselor, the School of Applied Technology at Edison. Terry Hammond, the assistant principal, the School of Business and Finance at Edison. Also, Linda Cantor, the principal, the School of Engineering and Manufacturing at Edison. And last but not least, David Grant, who is the assistant principal, the School of Imaging Technology at Edison.
Actually, on behalf of Applied Technology, Stefan McDonald, our replacement for Wendy Robinson, will be presenting tonight. He's our newest counselor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lanier. On behalf of the Edison Applied Tech family, our principal, Mr. Matthew Lanier, and myself, it is with great pleasure that I stand before you today to recognize Courtney White. One of her teachers most recently told me that no one has matured more than Courtney White over the past four years of high school. As her counselor for one year, I have known Courtney to be one of the most humble, genuine, and nicest people I've ever met. She is truly a leader and an exemplary role model for her peers at the Edison School of Applied Technology. She plans to attend Robert Wesleyan College or the Elam Bible Institute, where she will major in ministry. We are all extremely proud of you. Congratulations, Courtney.
I just wanna say thank you to my counselors and my principals for nominating me. I didn't know this award existed, but I'm so honored to have it. And I just wanna thank you all, and my teachers and counselors, that helped me and dealt with me all those years, these long four years. And I just really appreciate it. And I just wanna say thank you to you all for supporting, and the young ladies who achieved this. Good job.
Hi, I'm Terry Hammond, assistant principal for the School of Business, Finance, and Entrepreneurship. It is with great pleasure that we present this award to our student, number one student, Kayla Turnipseed. She isn't here right now. Kayla is a hard worker, and one thing that we're gonna really impress upon her is to take the time to smell her roses. She does work hard. She is ranked number one in her class. She ranked very high, one of the highest on her SAT scores. She is a true professional. She actually models what we really strive to teach our students in the School of Business, and she does show what she's been taught at home. She's very helpful with new students and with her students that she's even come in with. So we're very proud of Kayla. And again, I'd like to say that she couldn't be here, but one thing that we have to stress with her is when you work hard, you still need to take the time to stop and smell the roses. But we'd like to congratulate Kayla Turnipseed. Thank you anyway.
My name is Linda Cantor, and I'm the principal of the Engineering and Manufacturing School at Edison. It's my pleasure to introduce to you today our candidate for this award, Deanna Hill. She's very organized, and she's a goal-oriented lady. She is one of the most polite, respectful, and responsible students that I have met in my tenure in the district. Highly motivated to learn, she's been accepted at Hillbert, and she's going for a major in psychology. She's on honor roll all the time. She has participated in many activities. She's active with the Science and Technology Program. She has been involved in the leadership competition at RIT. She's participated in the Science and Math Bowls. She has participated in the RIT Nova Academy, National Society for Black Engineers, Junior Recreation Team, Black Scholar for the School of Engineering, and the Spanish Club. So she's very active. She was one of the first young ladies that I met as I began my new stint at Edison, and she's just a delightful young lady. I introduce Deanna Hill.
Hi, I would like to thank everybody who supported me, especially Ms. Cantor, because senioritis is very contagious, and she came in, she came in and made sure we was on track and gave us activities to do that would keep us interested in the school. So, thank you.
My name is David Grant, and I'm assistant principal of the School of Imaging and Information Technology. And I'm blessed to be able to represent my principal, Mrs. Bonnie Atkins, tonight to introduce Ebony Mallory, Ebony Antoinette Mallory, to be exact. Ebony is an outstanding student with a 3.89 unweighted average and a 5.4 weighted average, and she's our class salutatorian. She plans to major in either print media or be a mechanical engineer in the future, depending on what school she gets into. And, Mr. Bazzard, she's aspiring to get a pilot's license. She, right now, is waiting for a response from Rochester Institute of Technology, but right now, I think a couple of days ago, was accepted to Worcester Institute of Technology in Worcester, Massachusetts. We congratulate Ebony on receiving the Susan B. Anthony Award. She exemplifies the qualities and characteristics of Ms. Anthony. Ebony has been a student ambassador and represented IIT, most recently at Dr. Freddie Thomas High School during a special superintendent's forum conducted early this year. Her leadership and citizenship has been invaluable to the IIT community, and we're proud of her journey. We're gonna miss her, but we congratulate her and wish her the best.
I just wanna say thank you to everybody who supported me and pushed me and helped me get this far and helped me to strive for nothing but the best. So, thank you. And hi, Ms. Hassler.
Before we call up Commissioner White, I just want everyone to see what's on these bags. It says, "Failure is impossible." And after listening to everything that these women, these young ladies, are involved in, as long as you keep going in that direction, keep in action mode, doing the things for the right reasons, man, failure truly is impossible for you ladies. Next up, please welcome Commissioner White.
You know, I love that quote so much. I have that inscribed in my office. And really, to listen to you all, as Commissioner Campo said, your remarkable stories. Commissioner Evans, President Evans, was saying, man, we weren't doing half the stuff you guys were doing. It's really impressive to hear your stories, and I'm blessed to be able to be here tonight to do that. I'm also blessed, because Franklin is a school that I'm assigned to. So, you know, I have this phrase, my sister went here decades ago, probably, well, I won't say, 'cause she'll get mad at me, but many, 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 many years ago. And my son, as my daughter reminded me, used to play football here for Pop Warner. That was probably about a good, what, 15 years ago, 12 years ago? And I gotta say, this is my phrase for Franklin, have you seen Franklin lately? This is a remarkable school. And I wanna personally thank the staff, the leadership team, the students, for opening up your wonderful institution to us tonight, because people really need to see what Franklin is about today. It is a wonderful educational institution. So give yourselves a wonderful round of applause. Part of that leadership team is Mary, Dr. Sam, and Ali. Would you come up here, please? These are some awesome leaders. Come on up. Come on down like you're on Price is Right, because y'all deserve, give them a good round of applause. These are the leaders for this wonderful school.
Can I ask Portia Brown to come up and stand up here with me? Tell them you can hear all about her. And I wrote some comments down, because I don't wanna leave anything out and have her have to look at me tomorrow and say, you forgot something. I nominated Portia Brown for the Bioscience and Health Careers High School for the Susan B. Anthony Leadership Award for many reasons. Portia is an outgoing young lady who's overcome a great deal, working her way from an alternative program at the beginning of her academic career to a young lady who's working really hard to be successful. She's challenging herself by taking rigorous courses and is a wonderful role model for the rest of our school. Several months ago, we had a student pass away as a result of a swimming accident. Portia organized a fundraising effort for the entire school and worked diligently to raise close to $4,000 for the funeral expenses. Portia also works in the main office on a daily basis to support our clerical staff and presents as a welcoming and knowledgeable school representative. Portia's also a member of the Franklin tennis team. When asked about what she would like for me to share with you tonight, Portia wanted me to make sure that I acknowledged her mother, Patricia Palmer, who's in the audience tonight, as the major influence in our life. Several years ago, Portia's father passed away. As her family struggled with this tremendous loss, Mrs. Palmer continued to dedicate her life to her children and her career, providing support and encouragement. Portia says that she always knew that she was different from other children, because she saw life as an opportunity waiting to be discovered. I'm proud of Portia, and I expect her to do great things.
All right, I wanna start off by saying hello, everyone. And I know you ladies had like seconds of like an acceptance of speech, but I have a few things to get off my chest right quick. I'm sorry. First and foremost, when I first seen the letter that Ms. Aronson was coming to Franklin, I was like, oh, no, a principal from the suburbs? She's gonna look at us and run. But she did. She did it, and she gave us a chance, and I wanna say I respect you and thank you for coming here, turning bioscience into a Disney world. Thank you. On a more serious note, my best friend died in January, and I thought I was just gonna be weak and feeble, and I didn't know what I was gonna do, but I knew I had to do something. So, me and a few friends of mine, Gary and Luen especially, we all went around the whole school, I mean, the whole Franklin educational campus, down to Montessori and asked for money, and they donated. And everyone from all over Monroe County donated, and we, I had the honor of presenting with the principal the money to his mother. And just feeling that way, I felt so honored. I didn't, I wasn't sad. I was just like, you know, my best friend's dead, but he's still around me in spirit only, you know? I have to respect that. And last but not least, I would like to thank my mom. For years, Mom, you know, you've been there for me. Even when Dad died, you were there to hold all of our hand. And as I am the last one to graduate from the family and transition from high school to college, I wanna thank you. You will always be the wind beneath my wings, and I always wanna say, you made me who I am, so thank you.
I'm Sam Rodriguez, principal at Global Media Arts High School, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about our angel, Vivian Reeves, if you can come up. And I know she's gonna say something to me tomorrow, because she is one of our shyest angels, but let me tell you a little bit about Vivian. She deserves this award for several reasons. Vivian is a stellar student who exemplifies hard work, endurance, and maturity. She is a model for all young women, as she shows everyone that she respects herself and she expects others to respect her. She understands what it means to be successful, and she has a plan on getting there, as she will be attending MCC next fall. Her positive energy is felt by her peers, and she's a pleasure to see in our halls at GMA. She is an amazing example of personal growth in that she has matured into a focused young woman who will realize her full potential. Vivian Reeves. I told you she was gonna try to run away.
Thank you.
My name is Ali Abdoumatin, and I'm the, thank you, Sheena. And I want, before we go further, just give a big round of applause to our students who escorted you. They were dressed with the jackets. And as you see, Sheena's very proud of herself. She easily could have been a Susan B. Anthony Leadership Award recipient. As principal of International Finance School, I'm proud to present to you tonight Tara McCracken. Tara, would you please come forward?
Tara, would you please come forward? When she came in tonight, she was so dressed up, I was just so thrilled. You know, high school, you know how high school is. We at International Finance are very proud to recommend Tara McCracken as our recipient of the Susan B. Anthony Leadership Award for the '07-'08 school year. Tara's significant dedication to community building is reflected in her 122 hours of community service at her church, the Pentecostal Miracle Deliverance Church, where she's been a member for seven years. She collaborates with another peer and diligently teaches Sunday School to six- and seven-year-olds. She's also choir director for the nursery students, who are three and five-years-old, quite a significant challenge. Tara sings in the youth choir, operates the video equipment for the church, and plays drums in the church. She has also served as the camp counselor for readers and writers camp during the summer. The spirit that drives her in her church flows into her school performance. She has been a member of the girls varsity basketball team for three years. She's helped resurrect the operation of the school store, so students can purchase school supplies within the building. Has been a member of the PRISM team, the program in Rochester interests students in science and math, for three years, and has served as the captain of the team this year. We at the Franklin campus are very proud that our team has been the winner of the competition for the last three years. Tara's commitment and drive is reflected in her academic achievement. She has been on high honor roll throughout her high school career, has been selected Student of the Month on more than one occasion, and she has done fundraising to participate in what we term as the Franklin Road Trips. She's visited Boston, Washington DC, and New York City, an annual trip for our students. This year, our students are planning to attend Philadelphia, to visit Philadelphia. Her outstanding achievement and dedication has opened the door for her admission into Morgan State University, where she will major in accounting. Tara, that deserves applause, that's right. Tara sees herself as outgoing, independent, and she admires Oprah, as she says, for her rags-to-riches life experience. Tara is the seventh of nine children in her family, and she has fully actualized the vision of our school, which is a caring community, common concepts, collaboration, it all makes sense. I would like to present to you the Susan B. Anthony Leadership Award recipient for International Finance High School at Franklin, Tara McCracken.
First and foremost, I want to thank God, because he made me I'm here today. I want to thank my parents and my family, who supports me so much. I want to thank all my teachers, and I want to thank the principals, Ms. Beamish, and Mr. Abdoumatin, and all my friends, and thank you.
At this point, we'd like to welcome up the board up here, so that they can come and congratulate our young ladies, and young ladies, if you could come up. And then after that, if the young ladies can come right in the middle, and we're just going to give you a final round of appreciation. We will return with more Students First right after these messages. Stay tuned.
The Board of Education Non Teaching Employees, members of Bente, Local 2419, are the support staff that supports students. Nearly 1,500 employees providing the care and basic necessities for your children in the Rochester City School District every day. Services that ensure your child has a proper environment in which to learn. We are the first and the last people your children see throughout their school day.
Be careful of your kids.
The Board of Education Non Teaching Employees.
Kindergarten is an exciting time for children, full of fun, friends, and learning. If your child will be entering kindergarten in the Rochester City School District this fall, attend the Elementary School Fair Saturday, April 5th, at School of the Arts, from 12:00 to 3:00 PM. Catholic school students considering a move to public school are also welcome. Meet school staff, learn about the unique programs of each school, and determine which schools provide the best educational fit for your child. Rochester's elementary schools, the right choice for kindergarten.
Welcome back to Students First. Recently, students from Rochester School of the Arts presented the dance concert to sold-out crowds of parents, students, and community members. Students First is pleased to provide you with a number from this time of the show. Please enjoy.
That is the news, that was the news, this week in the Rochester City School District. As always, if you have any story ideas or questions, call us at 262-8755, or email us at studentsfirst@rcsdk12.org. Have a great week, and thanks for watching.